I'll have Susan email you, Jim. I asked that question too. And the RAC thought it was...I'll have Susan email you. And we'll send it to the board, too.
Okay, thank you.
It was left out specifically for safety issues, I guess.
Jim, do you hear? Susan will be contacting you?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is vehicle order for 2023. Delivery chief.
Yes, thank you. So late last month, I learned that Ford was going to be closing out their order-taking for 2023 vehicles, particularly their hybrid models, which we are obviously interested in pursuing hybrid purchasing to help go green. So kind of had a deadline put on me of September 2nd is when we needed to make an order. So I took that information to Mr. Erickson and requested from Mr. Erickson the authorization to order two police Ford interceptor SUVs that have 3.3-liter hybrid motors. One of them will be a replacement for a current Ford SUV that we have that's a gas-powered engine. And then the other one would be used for the proposed K-19. We did place an order with Laurel Auto Group. We've worked with them in the past and they've been fantastic. They were very helpful with getting these orders placed in a timely manner and before we missed the closing. And we did utilize the CoStarz purchasing program. I did try to get a few other quotes and did get a couple, and Laurel was the lowest price that we had. But the purchase price for the two vehicles is $92,160. Delivery is expected, hopefully sometime in 2023. Obviously, that order could be fully or partially canceled if needed without any penalty. And I think this is just more of a information for the board. I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken on this.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board at the time? All right, there's no action needed. Thank you, chief.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is public works, operations. There are no items for that. Next is engineering, planning, and zoning. The Planning Commission report. Planning Commissioner member Brian Rader will give a report.
Thank you. So our Planning Commission meeting just a couple of days ago, we had reviewed, there is a garage that is located on North Atherton Street next to Taco Bell. That property, that parcel has functioned as a garage for many years. Thank you. And the developer was very responsive to our suggestions, which were as follows. One is, you know, our bicycle ordinance just got passed moments ago. However, they were willing to put bicycle parking at the property per our request. Second is, when this parcel was developed years ago, obviously everything behind it, such as Trader Joe's, Wegmans, was not there. And this parcel is going to be an Asian market, an Asian food market. And so it seemed to make a lot of sense to be able to attempt to make this property more pedestrian-friendly. And as a result, the developer has agreed to, if you look at there, you see the pines in the back, so there will be steps leading to the rear sidewalk, which will then allow pedestrians to connect to the developments in the back. And also, and there's a bus stop in close proximity. So that was, the developer was in agreement to taking, agreeing to do that. And just so the community is aware, this is going to be an Asian market. They will be selling food inside. There won't be any inside dining. It's just, you know, food to go. And there will be an addition. So when you look at that building, it's L-shaped. There's going to be an addition which will go to the left by, I don't know, I think about 2,100 square feet. Correct. Right there will be the new addition. Towards the front parking lot, that was a, took a little bit of time to talk through that. So PennDOT, you can see there's two openings there, one to the right and another to the left. The opening to the left is intended for truck deliveries only. And that opening is going to have a concrete rumble strip, I guess that's what I'm referring it to. But so that will be between the rumble strip and signage. It's our hope that the public will not be pulling into that first section of the parking lot. So that will only be for deliveries. The second section will be for public to enter and exit. And they will also have signage. So when they pull out of there, it's going to be, they're going to be able to make a right-hand turn only in the direction of traffic. We're also, between the entrances to the, in the front, it's likely that a bike parking will be there, but that wasn't fully determined to the location of the bike parking. The steps in the rear are going to be illuminated to some extent, so they, you know, well, just for safety purposes. That's all I have. Ken, I presume your question is directed towards my, towards me, so I'll proceed and answer.
Ken?
Oh, hang on. He's the developer's engineer.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear? Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hang on, Ken. Let's get, we'll recognize you here in a little bit here. Mark, did you want to have anything else to say, or Alex about the plan? Alex, can you put the site plan up on the screen?
Sure.
I think that Brian did a pretty good job covering what is being proposed when they're done. This is, this is in the C1 zone. It's a little under three-quarters of an acre. By the time the addition is added, it'll be around 6,300 square feet in size. It's going to be the final size of that, of that structure. So I think otherwise, Brian's overview of kind of the site and what the Planning Commission recommended was well-covered.
Alex?
Sorry, with one exception. Brian stated that the entrance to the, my cursor, that's going to be the right in, right out. The left, or sorry. Where my cursor is on the left is going to be where the right in, right out is. On the right will be where the truck
And we did utilize the Co-Stars purchasing program. I did try to get a few other quotes and did get a couple, and Laurel was the lowest price that we had. But the purchase price for the two vehicles is $92,160. Delivery is expected, hopefully sometime in 2023. Obviously, that order could be fully or partially canceled if needed without any penalty. And I think this is just more of a information for the board. I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken on this.
Okay. Are there any questions from the, the board at this time? All right, there's no action needed. Thank you, chief.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is public works, operations. There are no items for that. Next is engineering, planning, and zoning. The Planning Commission report. Planning Commissioner member Brian Rader will give a report.
Thank you. So our Planning Commission meeting just a couple of days ago, we, we reviewed, there is a garage that is located on North Atherton Street next to Taco Bell. That property, that parcel has functioned as a garage for many years. Thank you. And the developer was very responsive to our suggestions, which were as follows. One is, you know, our bicycle ordinance just got passed moments ago. However, they were willing to put bicycle parking at the property per our request. Second is, when this parcel was developed years ago, obviously everything behind it, such as Trader Joe's, Wegmans, was not there. And this parcel is going to be an Asian market, an Asian food market. And so it seemed to make a lot of sense to be able to attempt to make this property more pedestrian-friendly. And as a result, the developer has agreed to, if you look at there, you see the pines in the back. So there will be steps leading to the rear sidewalk, which will then allow pedestrians to connect to the developments in the back. And also, and there's a bus stop in close proximity. So that was, the developer was in agreement to, to taking, to agreeing to do that. And just so the community is aware, this is going to be an Asian market. They will be selling food inside. There won't be any inside dining. It's just, you know, food to go. And there will be an addition. So when you look at that building, it's L-shaped. There's going to be an addition which will go to the left by, I don't know, I think about 2,100 square feet. Correct. Right there will be the, the new addition. Towards the front parking lot, that was a, took a little bit of time to talk through that. So PennDOT, you can see there's two openings there, one to the right and another to the left. The opening to the left is intended for truck deliveries only. And that opening is going to have a, a concrete rumble strip. I guess that's what I'm referring it to. But, so that will be between the rumble strip and signage. It's our hope that the public will not be pulling in to that first section of the parking lot. So that will only be for deliveries. The second section will be for public to enter and exit. And they will also have signage. So when they pull out of there, it's going to be, they're going to be able to make a right-hand turn only in the direction of traffic. We're also, between the entrances to the, in the front, it's likely that the, a bike parking will, will be there, but that wasn't fully determined to the location of the bike, bike parking. The steps in the rear are going to be illuminated to some extent, so they, you know, well, just for safety purposes. That's all I have. Ken, I presume your question is directed towards my, towards me, so I'll proceed and answer.
Ken?
Oh, hang on. He's, he's the developer's engineer.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear? Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah. Hang on, Ken. Let's get, we'll, we'll recognize you here in a little bit here. Mark, did you want to have anything else to say, or Alex about the plan? Alex, can you put the site plan up on the screen?
I think that Brian did a pretty good job covering what is being proposed when they're done. This is, this is in the C1 zone. It's a little under three quarters of an acre. By the time the addition is added, it'll be around 6,300 square feet in size. It's going to be the final size of that, of that structure. So I think otherwise, Brian's overview of kind of the site and what the Planning Commission recommended was well-covered.
Alex?
Sorry, with one exception. Brian stated that the entrance to the, my cursor, that's going to be the right in, right out. The left, or, sorry. Where my cursor is on the left is going to be where the right in, right out is. On the right will be where the truck deliveries are going to come in. Is that correct, Ken?
Yes, that's, that's where I put my hand up, just to clarify that, yes.
Okay. We can turn it over to you now to, to do your brief introduction to the project.
Yes. Do you happen to have the plan available, Alex? I don't have it available where I'm at.
Oh, okay. Give me a minute.
Apologize for that.
It's okay.
But, yeah, as, as, another clarification is that the food that's going to be offered is, it, it will be on their shelves, in their deli section, is where the food will be available to put in your shopping cart. So that's kind of, it, it's, it's an Asian grocery store, if you think of it as that. And they, they specialize, obviously, in specialty Asian items. And they also have, they call it a JC market, because in addition to grocery items, they'll, they do have some retail items, more along the line of Asian-type retail items as well. So with that, yeah, this plan shows the, the right in, right out entrance there, and we're reworking the curb line. And we have added some, some trees and some signage in that area. Now, those trees will be relocated. That was one of the things that we discussed in the Planning Commission, to ensure that we don't obstruct any sightlines along Atherton there. So aside from that, there, there is some pedestrian crossing signs, some do not enter signage. And we're working through the PennDOT, final PennDOT approvals on this, but I have spoken with Jim Roman at PennDOT, and he has given us, given us his verbal blessing on the layout. Obviously, we are still, we still need the final permit, which is pending. Aside from that, we have also submitted to the, the County Conservation District. And I talked to Dan Westcock today on the phone, and he said that he will be issuing an approval letter here within, within the end of the week. So we will provide that as well. But aside from that, I think you guys had, had done a pretty good explanation of what's going on. There will be a, a small building addition. And aside from that, you know, there, there is some added landscaping that, that you'll see along the sides of the property line. We are updating the lighting to conform with the current township code. The back parking is going to be reworked to provide the required number of parking stalls to meet the ordinance. We're providing better dumpster and trash receptacle areas. We provided a loading, unloading area. And, and that's pretty much it. It's, it's a pretty small, straightforward project. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions you may have for me.
Okay. Any board member that have a question? Supervisor Ellen?
The, when you're on Atherton Street, you don't have many seconds to realize that you didn't turn at the right place or shouldn't have turned. And so some places we have curbs and others, this is not going to be a curb. This is going to be a place where your, your vehicle will not be damaged if you make the mistake, even though you shouldn't make the mistake.
If you drive over the rumble strips?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be loud and noisy and uncomfortable, but it shouldn't damage your vehicle.
That's fine.
Ken, I have a question.
Yes.
Is the entrance the only way to get into the market? My question and my concern is Chick-fil-A. No matter what sign you put up, we've had Chief Jolly and his officers standing out there not to make a left-hand turn, not to turn at all. But you're saying they're going to be assigned to say, do not enter because it's a truck zone? What's to stop individuals from pulling into that?
Well, they might, but the, the outcome of it is they just enter the driveway over the.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it, it shouldn't cause it, it's still a right-hand turn in.
Oh, okay.
So it's not like there, you can't make a left in because there's, there's a barrier out.
Oh, okay. Now, I just want to make sure, because you know the headache we just had. Okay, Ken, Doug has answered my question. Is there any other questions from the public at this time? Seeing none. So staff has found the plans meet the township regulations with the following conditions.
And they've agreed to do all the things the Planning Commission asked them also?
Yeah, the completion of all items noted on each comment letter provided by staff, plus highlighted on page six. Supervisor Abrams?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this plan. I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Next on the agenda is open space program agreement to implement Hamer Foundation grant project. Doug?
As you recall, 2021, we were awarded a grant from the Hamer Foundation. They're a local foundation that provides grants for a lot of conservation-minded types of projects. And they did award us a, a grant of $164,400 to develop a conservation plan for Grace Woods Preserve and the Hawe Family Preserve to update the forestry stewardship plan for the Hawe property and create an initial forestry stewardship plan for Grace Woods, and then also to begin implementing some of the forestry stewardship projects on the Grace Woods property. Last year, as you recall, we did work with Clearwater Conservancy. We did create a conservation easement for the Grace Woods property. Hamer Foundation has also provided Clearwater Conservancy funding for that to, to monitor that easement and do all the work that they need to do from their end of it. At this time, I've been working with Katie Ambolsky, who's Woods, who operates as Woods and Waters Consulting, and she's also working with a couple of subconsultants. We've put together an agreement to create those plans that noted before and do the forestry stewardship work. Beyond the 164,000 from the Hamer Foundation, the township has matched that with $37,500 of our own monies. That's generated off the Hawe property. And the work is all, the conservation plan will be done sometime next summer, and then the forestry implementation work will, will be ongoing from 2023 through 2024. And the plan is that we have all these funds expended by the end of 2024. So I'd ask that the board take action to approve the consultant agreement for 2022 open space properties as noted.
Okay. Supervisor Abrams?
Move approval.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. Sutan, second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is 2022 legislative update. Doug, you're up.
Take a little break, Ken, at this point.
Okay. We would like to take a short break at this time. We'll be back shortly. Thank you.
We're moving along very fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit. Actually feel a lot better. Been a couple of weeks on, just had a fever, a cold. Better and thank you.
That's how I felt too. I don't wanna get anyone sick.
Wow, so jolly, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Is this public or no?
No.
Yeah.
Right now, no.
Yeah, yeah, not either, so I'll just say hello.
See ya.
Okay, alright. Always a good question to ask.
Yes, a very good question to ask. Sorry, by the way, uh, if you could just look up. Out of curiosity, how long things could we have? I'm uh, I'm not gonna say it soon, so I'm just here. It seems a lot more streamlined than I imagined. Oh, that's okay. Um, is it usually just from like, like, the top to bottom?
Oh, that's awesome.
Okay. Yeah, that's awesome. Um, I'm actually, I'm here for my real estate business. So, I'm, I'm glad there are actually some relevant topics.
Oh, cool.
Just a brief tour. Um, I'm an actuarial science major, but I'm in real estate. So, that's, uh.
I'm just hanging out for the while I need. And maybe I'll catch something interesting.
Just wanted to see.
I'll probably go, uh, probably be leaving soon.
Okay, thanks for your report, it was complete.
Thank you. The idea of a break isn't all that bad. Our planning commission meeting is a little long, but I think it'll make it real quick.
I talked to Ron about it in the meeting. Something like breaks in the last few days, you know, I said, what are the breaks? He said, after item six.
I didn't think it would go this far.
Yeah, no, I was gonna tell her, just flag her through, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Next time? I'll, I'll tell you what, you can take it on that chair, I'm gonna walk you out.
Yeah, we're gonna look this way.
Go ahead, you can take it.
Yeah, but if you're responsible, we can make sure that we make sure of tomorrow.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead. I think it was, it was like, yeah.
Thank you, ready to go live.
We're ready to go live. We're back from our break. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda from administration is twenty twenty-two legislative update, Doug.
Yeah, I wanted to give the board some information on, uh, three pieces of legislation that were approved in July. The first is Act fifty-seven of twenty twenty-two. Um, and this prevents taxing jurisdictions to waive certain penalties and fe- fees uh, related to real estate taxes for people who are in their first year in new homes, which sometimes we have trouble making sure they get their tax notice and they, uh, pay their partial year taxes. So, the state has come up with a, a waiver process and they're working on a waiver form and some other stuff. But, uh, the short story is, the, the board needs to, uh, consider and review, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero twenty-two, uh, which would adopt these waiver, these waivers, um, and then this would go into effect in twenty twenty-three. And school district adopted theirs a couple of weeks ago and all the other municipalities are working on it here at the same time, right? With that, I'd ask the board to consider approving Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two-two.
All right.
So, move. Second.
Second, discussion? Discussion, Ellie?
Um, I agree with doing this, except, um, if a person doesn't learn in the first year that they owe taxes, how do we assure that in the second year?
Well, this only applies to the first year.
Well, I know that, but.
Well, then they, they pay penalties and if they don't, you know, you can pay your real estate taxes at discount, which is thirty days prior to their due, or at face value, and then if you don't pay them at face value, you pay a penalty and if you don't pay them at all, it goes to collection through the tax claim bureau.
Right, but I mean, that's the situation right now. But if people don't know, I think we have to help get them to.
Oh, we do, we do.
So, we, we send them on, um, uh, reminders before the, uh, the, the discount period comes up, we send them another reminder if they didn't pay before the penalty period comes in, so.
Great.
We, we, we do keep up on it.
Yeah, if you're one of the people who has your mortgage lender pay your taxes, you probably don't see all the reminders that go out for all the folks that don't have mortgages, they get multiple notices beyond, be, beyond the bill that they get.
You all right, Ellie?
Yes.
Susan?
Chair.
I learned after the first year, that's it. Sorry.
Okay.
I do appreciate the reminders and it's very transparent, so.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes, thank you.
So, the next two are just for information and for direction, but, um, Act forty-one of twenty twenty-two again was approved in July, signed by the governor. Um, and this provides an alternate procedure for resolving an unclear boundary between municipalities. And you may or may not be aware that there's some disagreement about where exactly the boundary lies between patent township and vendor township. Uh, if you look on PennDOT maps, there's a nice straight line that goes up through and cuts several parcels in half and stuff. But, um, from the municipal point of view, uh, way back, I don't know when it happened, but I've been, been informed that there was a gentleman's agreement that, uh, between the boards of supervisors for the two townships that fixed the boundary line as the western right-of-way of line of Fillmore Road, which is the vendor township road, and then the easterly right-of-way line of Purdue Mountain Road, which is the patent township road. And if you look at the tax map, uh, all the tax parcels are appropriately numbered. So, the ones on the, we'll say, the east side of those two roads are all in vendor township, and the ones on the west side are all, uh, in patent township. So, prior to this, uh, you had to get the courts involved to make a determination on a, on a boundary. Uh, this provides a, a, a method where the two municipalities can mutually agree to do something. Now, if somebody feels aggrieved, they can protest and one, a protest from one person takes this whole process and puts it back in the court system. But I think, uh, given that we have this new process, it'd be, uh, opportu- it'd be an opportune time to approach vendor township and to see if they're, they're willing to, uh, work, work on something jointly with us. Um, so if the board's in agreement, I will start that discussion with the vendor township officials here in the next few weeks.
Okay, board, what is your decision?
I agree.
It's concurred.
I have a question.
Uh, supervisor, Torino has a question.
You just got a email from former supervisor George Downsborough.
Yep.
This afternoon. Questioning whether the, the old Methodist church there on corner of Fillmore Road, in fact, D fifty was in, uh, patent township or in vendor township? But because it's west of Fillmore Road, it's.
Yeah, it's in patent township.
And it has a patent township tax ID number, so.
Okay.
If your, if your local government wonk, you know that all tax ID parcels that start with eighteen are all patent township ones. And I think vendor township's twenty-fourth, twenty-five or something like that.
Twenty-five, I think.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, I think, yeah, like I said, the mi- the municipalities have always, um, been in agreement and I don't think we had one minor disagreement with a person that had more to do with the school district than anything else.
Correct.
That Ken worked on when he was zoning officer. Uh, but, you know, we've never had any real, real systems. Uh, but I, this would be a good chance to, to clarify everything and get the maps, get the state maps all squared.
Yeah, it, it's better to have some, something in writing.
Yep, yep.
Than a supposed gentleman's agreement and nobody alive who was part of that agreement.
Tom Kurtz is in town, I can ask him if he remembers anything more.
Okay, so Doug, you.
Yep, I will move forward with that.
All righty.
And then I'm gonna have, Act seventy-four of twenty twenty-two is, provides for additional regulations of fireworks. And Chief, you wanna talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, sure, and, uh, Doug did a pretty good job of giving you a very, um, broad overview of kind of some of the, the changes that they made. Um, but the new law, Act seventy-four, just went into effect, uh, last Friday, it was September ninth. Um, and the municipalities have always had, uh, discretion, uh, to have, um, some authority over display fireworks. Um, and this new act has kind of, uh, given us some, some latitude with consumer fireworks as well. So, it's things that you'd see, um, not necessarily a display like the fourth best, uh, but something that would be in a residential setting possibly. Um, so, under the new law, a municipality, uh, may use the application and permitting process to grant permission to prospective consumer fireworks users. Um, it also contains a provision allowing dense municipalities, obviously we have park forests, very dense, um, where local officials determine the use of consumer fireworks is prohibited by the one hundred and fifty-foot clearance, uh, from any buildings or vehicles rule, which is, uh, in the law, uh, to adopt an ordinance specifically prohibiting the use of consumer fireworks. Um, this authorization does not exist in the twenty seventeen version of the law, uh, so that's a change. Um, and I did have our township engineer tech, Ryan Confer, uh, check our, uh, our township. Uh, he provided me with a map. Uh, about eighty-seven point seven percent of our, um, residences or the structures uh, within the township would not be allowed to use fireworks based on that one hundred and fifty-foot clearance rule. Um, so like I said, municipalities have always had the authority to authorize display fireworks through a permitting process. Um, the law also contains language that are authorizing other possible ways to limit consumer fireworks, such as through like a noise ordinance or a nuisance ordinance. Um, but the Pennsylvania municipal league right now is basically recommending, um, that any municipality is interested in curbing, uh, consumer firework use. Uh, to discuss this matter further, um, maybe run a. To discuss this matter further, maybe run a pass to solicitor. But I know Doug and I have spoken about it. If it's something that the township and the board is interested in pursuing, that I could maybe come back in the next meeting or two with some sample ordinances and maybe something that we could take a look at, see if some we're interested in moving forward with.
Okay. What is the board's pleasure, one? Chief, pursuing information and give back to us at the next meeting. Okay?
Yeah, yeah, I, Chief, I think we should maintain the, our township's current practices. And if you recommend, you know, tightening up or loosening it up on our current practices, you know, yeah, you can come back with us, to us with your recommendation.
Is that okay with you, Chief?
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is real estate tax appeal settlement for the Shiner Hotel properties. And that is our solicitor, Betsy Dupree. Dupree, where's, is she here?
She was there. Are you with us, Betsy?
I'm here.
Hi, Betsy.
As I think noted in the agenda by the manager, there are a series, you've been advised several times, we've got a series of tax appeals pending. There are a bunch that involve partnership hotels in the township, Holiday Inn Express, Spring Hill Suites, Hampton Inn and Suites, and the Fairfield Inn. The assessment office has come to a proposed settlement on those. I'll let either the manager or Mr. Pegg respond as to their thoughts, but I think they're in agreement. These make a pretty reasonable adjustment, given COVID changes in a couple of the tax years in terms of use of hotels and so forth. But otherwise, I think by and large, preserve the assessments that existed. And in one case, I think actually the appraisals were higher than the assessments. So in any event, the recommendation here is to accept these settlement agreements. The school district has already done that. When the township lets us, if we can get the process on board to get these filed, signed and filed of record. And these will be completed. I think we only have one pending then, but I'm hoping that Doug or Larry will remind me. I think it's just the Northwest Savings Bank one that we have pending then from the appeals last year.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board for our solicitor at this time? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Betsy.
So the board's in agreement with having the solicitor? Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes. Confirming settlements.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is to review the 2020 census results. Doug?
Yeah, unfortunately, we have Mark Vogel here, who actually was the author of the memo that I included. Mark Works for the Center Regional Planning Agency. He's been filling in while they find a new planner for us, which they have, who will be around starting in a month. So we're very happy. We'll have a new planner on board mid-October. But in terms of, there's been a lot of discussion and comments about the census process in 2020. It was in the midst of COVID. Penn State had sent everybody home. And the count was a little iffy, let's just put it that way. I think if you look at the numbers and you follow, you know, if you looked at our census estimates in 2015 up through 2019 and 2020, there was a pretty steady growth in the township in terms of residents. And we'd also added, you know, a few thousand new bedrooms in terms of apartments and stuff. But when the census numbers came in, they were pretty much flat from 2018 to 2019 to 2020. So I had Mark look into some detail. So mostly where the student housing is in Patton Township, in the viral Boulevard area and Off Street area. And although I think there's enough evidence to say, yeah, there was an undercount, I don't think there's enough evidence there that says if we went and did our own recount that we would find enough additional residents to make a real financial difference for us. And even whether we find enough to even pay for the recount is a question. The only thing, the only item that we get, the only revenues we get based on population are our liquid fuel tax revenues that we receive from the state. So when you buy gas or diesel, but not electricity, you pay a tax to the state and the federal government. And then the federal government and the state turn around and send some of those taxes, those revenues, back to the local municipalities. We get $17.81 per person. And like I think I did, if we did a recount, which probably wouldn't occur for another year or two, and we found 1,000 residents, we'd still probably only get $107,000 in LFT revenue. So I, when I wrote this, I had no clue at all what a recount would cost. Talking to Mark a little bit, he said recount would probably cost more than that. So I think, I will continue to look around a little bit and see about, can we get cost of recounts? But I think we can pretty much put this issue to bed that it's just not worthwhile, worth our while to really pursue it any further.
Okay, Supervisor Trevino?
I know the census only occurs every 10 years, but isn't there some annual or biannual or triannual?
I'd rather Mark answer that, because he's the local expert.
Yeah, annually, the Census Bureau releases what are called American Community Survey Estimates. The key here is that is based upon a survey that they send out every year to a certain number of residents in every municipality. And they basically compile all that data and come up with what is an estimate with a margin of error. The challenge with that is that it's not typically accepted, I don't think, when you are asking for funding sources, because it is just an estimate. They don't, they actually say that you shouldn't rely upon that for an actual value, but just to look at how it is indicating trends are happening. So if it shows a higher number, it's probably indicating that you're growing as a community, but not to rely on that number 100%.
So our liquid fuel tax rate stays constant for 10 years until the next census? Is that what you're saying?
Our, the population they use to calculate what our share of that LFT is the same. Yeah, it's always based on the...
The $17.81 per year.
Yeah, the amount, the actual amount. And the pool grows and shrinks from year to year, so we may get more, we may get less every year. But yeah, it's always based on those official census results.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Abrams?
So the estimate of the cost of the recount, that would be an upfront thing that we do first.
And we'd have to pay that.
Right, but when you talk about that that might be more than we collect, that's on the full eight years, right?
No, you don't get to go back either.
No, the next eight years.
What?
Doesn't that affect the next seven years?
Yeah, it could. So we might get $17,000, $25,000 a year. So, you know, Mark, Mark said he'd heard of recounts costing a couple hundred thousand, so.
A recount to be recognized by the Census Bureau has to be conducted by the Census Bureau at the cost of the local municipality requesting it. And they follow the exact same process of doing a recount that they do to do the census. They would do a complete address indexing for the entire community, do flyers, hire people to come out and actually do the physical enumeration. So there's a time component to it. And my understanding is it typically runs in the hundreds of thousands of dollars to have a special census conducted.
But we'll keep checking if we find any other information that gives us a glimmer of hope, we'll come back to you.
Supervisor McGruder?
And I'm aware, so COVID definitely impacted the count, correct?
Yeah.
And I'm aware, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like the counting was also cut short for political purposes?
Well...
I believe that's the case. I just think it's...
Yeah, I mean, there was a lot of, heading into the census, there were a lot of people who were quite wary of providing information to the Census Bureau, because they weren't sure how it was going to be used. So actually, the message that I was telling people as much as anything, the only question you have to answer on the census is how many people live there. Beyond that, you don't really have to give many more information other than that. And they will process that information. You know, what impact the political climate have, I couldn't tell you. Like I said, I just, unfortunately, I just don't think there's enough meat on the bone here to really spend more time and effort pursuing the issue.
Well, I just think it's important for people to understand that science matters and doing good science requires those in power and charged to, with good faith effort, help to support the scientists to do that, because then we see the implications of this. And we're seeing this, you know, nationally of undercounts and individuals losing out then on financial incentives, which helps citizens within the community. So it's important that y'all pay attention to who's in charge so that shit can get done effectively. I'm done.
Supervisor Trevino?
Just one more thing. It seems to me then, only a municipality who, for whatever reason, is experiencing rapid growth, let's say, new developments come in and you have 1,000 new single-family homes put in in a couple of years, and then you have 1,000 new families moving in, then it would make a lot of sense for them, if it's early in the census process like now, to have, go ahead and pay for a recount, because there'll be quite a significant increase in the fuel tax.
Yeah. And communities that receive, there are some communities, based on demographics and stuff, who receive a lot more federal funding than municipalities like Patton Township. Our per capita income is too high to receive a lot of federal grant money through primarily CDVG, community development block grants, and some other programs like that. So in some of those communities where, you know, they may be receiving, you know, a couple hundred dollars a year per person, it may make some more sense for them to look at it harder, where, you know, for us, it's $17.81, so. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Abrams?
And so considering that most of the undercount was among people who turned out, unless students had less income, that average would go down, wouldn't it?
Um, yeah, but still, our per capita income's still too high.
Right.
Yeah. And we didn't, we only looked at those two areas of the township. We didn't go back and do any other. One thing you'll find when you look at census results over time, and I think the biggest change I ever saw was in Park Forest Village from 2010, that there was a dramatic drop in Park Forest Village. And, you know, why was that? Well, all the kids grew up and left home. And you had, you had a lot more two-family households in Park Forest Village, because, you know, those homes were now 30 years older, so. So yeah, you'll see in places, you'll see that drop in population in neighborhoods over time, too. So we didn't look at everything, we just picked the two that we thought would be the biggest impacts. And again, like I said, unfortunately, I don't know that there's enough there that's gonna make sense for us to pursue it any further. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda is pay adjustments for non-uniform employees.
Yeah, after we had finished the negotiations with the police on their contract for 2023, Larry had been looking at what we might be able to do for our non-uniform employees. One thing we've been having a real struggle with is hiring and retaining people with commercial driver's licenses. Now, those folks that fix the roads, plow the snow, pick up your brush and leaves. So they're very important to the township. And we've been steadily, over time, doing, making very small incremental raises, trying to keep people, Ken, about half of Ken's job is interviewing and hiring people and doing that. So we've been looking at these things for a while. Larry put together a proposal that he shared with me. That is that chart with all the numbers, names and numbers on it. That included, and our census started out as, you know, if we looked at a $2 an hour increase for everybody, what would that do? How much would that cost? And then we looked at it, broke that down and divided that $2 an hour up into depending on where you were in the pay scale. Part of that is what we call a market rate adjustment. So those are the folks that we want to increase their pay so we keep them. And we don't, so we don't have to spend time and money and effort to replace them on a regular basis. And then the phenomena that we've really seen this year is when we start pushing wages up from the bottom, we compress everything. And to keep everybody else in the family happy, everybody gets a little bit of a raise. So in some cases, so the folks that were on the lower end of the pay scale got the biggest market rate adjustments. As you moved up through the pay scale, you got lesser market rate adjustment. Everybody got the same cost of living, a mid-year cost of living adjustment, about 3.9%. It varied a little bit depending on where you were in the pay scale. But for most, most of the employees also got some sort of a market rate adjustment. Included an example on page 12 of how that would work. We did get our CPI number for August came out on Tuesday. It was a...
6.3.
Yeah, there was a little attachment in the update that came out. The cost of living index that we use in Patton Township and that we've used for 20, 30 years is the CPIU less food and energy. You say, well, now, why do you use that? Well, because it's less volatile. It doesn't move up and down nearly as fast as the big number. If you look, all items was 8.3. All items less food and energy was 6.3. So 6.3 is the number that really is, Larry's gonna bake into the budget. So the folks that are getting the 3.9 or 4% cost of living adjustment will then get a 2.4%, thank you, Larry, adjustment in January 1st. That would get them all the way up to the 6.3. We have always honored that COLA adjustment for our employees. They do get a 1.25% merit increase every year that occurs on their anniversary date. And so that'll continue, whether their anniversary date falls between now and the end of the year or after the beginning of the year. So I don't know, Larry, you got anything you want to add or share or?
Uh, no, I think you covered it all.
So that's what our proposal is, is based on inflation and the need to increase wage rates on, especially on folks at the lower end of the pay scale. We'd like the board to endorse this approach. And if not, we'd ask you for your questions and we'd like to discuss it with you.
Supervisor Abrams?
I move that we endorse this.
Certainly.
Supervisor McGruder, did you think?
Second.
Second.
Oh, okay. Discussion?
Just some detailed questions. On your attachment that you included for the supervisors.
Yes.
You estimated a total change, wages and benefits of $114,000 as an increase over what we currently are paying. That's annual, correct?
Yes.
So that...
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not gonna, that's not correct. Because that includes both... Because that includes both the cost of living of the four percent plus the market adjustment, okay? So the people at the low end that are ten and a half percent, they're getting a four percent COLA, a six and a half percent market adjustment. So only the COLA portion of it would be in.
Okay. But that number?
That number is the full year. That's one, yeah, that's a full year, that's an annualized number.
That's what I meant. So that we're only three months left in the year.
Right, it's not going to be that high.
So, yeah, it's only a fourth, right? A fourth of this amount. So it, in terms of, of the impact on the township budget, it's probably pretty minimal because aren't we already?
It's only going to be.
Getting revenues above our estimates? Are, are we collecting revenues above our?
Yeah, I mean typically. Not much.
Not much.
But we, you know, I mean, we did, when we looked at the mid-year, it was only a couple percent over.
Yeah. I mean, we, we haven't had, are we at full employment now, road crews or still?
Yeah, minus one.
That's.
So there's, there's, there's money that we haven't been spending on, on, on salaries for the road crews.
Bottom line, I'm just, really, there's no.
It's not going to be.
Not much of a budget impact on the township budget for this year.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is resolution for the Pennsylvania Municipal League Summit. Doug?
Uh, yeah, they were included in the, in the agenda materials. I did look through them briefly today. I didn't see anything that, you know, gave me any pause or anything. That's pretty standard fare for PML. But people who'd like to look at them in more depth, this will be on the agenda again on the twenty-eighth, so we can give direction to Pam. She's our voting delegate for the summit, which is the first week in October.
Any questions? Standing none. Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda is Center County Solid Waste Management Plan.
Yep, so the, the authority has to produce a solid waste management plan on a regular schedule. Sorry, I don't know where it is. DEP says they're required to share that with all municipalities within the county. Provided a link. Partial plan was included in the agenda, and there's links to it. If you have comments, we can send them to the, the authority, but as they know, if we don't have any comments, that's fine with them, and that's considered a positive response. So if the board has no comments, there's no more, nothing more needs to be done with this one.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Supervisor Trevino?
A question for Alex. Has she reviewed this, or you, Doug, reviewed this? Or is there anything we should be concerned about in this?
No, I, I think the, the key point in here is that they have secured disposal contracts, I think with three landfills for the next ten years, which is the important part of what they do. There's, and beyond that, there's nothing, there's no new programming or anything like that. It's keep on doing the same sorts of things they've done with recycling and refuse.
So there's no specific, no specific impact on our township? Because this is a, is it Center County Solid Waste?
Yeah, yeah. No, there wasn't anything in here that.
Okay.
Was a real change to what they were doing.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other supervisors? Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Moving next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Doug, again.
Uh, four items on the consent agenda, one appointment to Center Region Board of Appeals, minutes voucher report, and the receipt of the minimum municipal obligation for pension plans that the board is required to receive in September of each year.
Okay, is there any item, or items on there? No. Supervisor Trevino?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passed. Next on the agenda is the manager's report. Doug, you're up again.
Thank you. Let me get my attachments. One piece of correspondence addressed to the boards related to UAJ. Environmental notice for some work that UAJ is planning to do. The board doesn't need to do anything with that. Unless you have questions or comments, the development update was also included with Planning Commission Agenda. There was additional, under announcements, there was additional information provided by DEP on PFAS, the PFAs. Groundwater impact issue has been in township by the airport. They have been doing a fairly good job of keeping people informed, providing regular updates to everybody and answering their questions. So we'll continue to rely on DEP for that, for that work. The Fall Newsletter went out about a week ago or so. You should have gotten one at your house. This is Sophie Weston's first, first product. We think she did a pretty bang-up job.
She did.
And she's now working on putting together a newsletter that will go out here in the next few weeks or something. We are under a drought watch, despite what it looks like out there. It's very.
Green.
But the state says we're under a drought watch, and that was, I got another email today confirming that, so we'll have to wait and see until. I don't know what the regu, I don't know what the criteria are.
There's a certain day.
So there's supposed to be, you're supposed, we're under a voluntary five to ten percent reduction. But if you look at my yard, the mushrooms are starting to come back up.
There's a certain date that that's released, based on the previous weeks and months.
Yeah, I, yeah, like I said, I got, there's, you know, DEP's got a really nice press release service, you can go on, sign up for those, and you get those on a regular basis, and all kinds of interesting stuff.
A flood of information.
We are currently in the process of doing our gypsy moth egg mass survey. Joe Wilson, who did our survey last year, is out doing it. We had some quite scattered reports of gypsy moths this year, so there were a few places in Park Forest. One of the harder-hit areas seems to be Pantops. So Joe's been, I can't, he's working on it this week, and he's doing, hitting a few other parks and stuff in the area to see what, see what he can find. So process is, he does a visual survey of, and then he counts egg masses that he finds, and we get up to a certain amount of egg masses per acre, then we'll arrange for aerial treatment that will have occurred in mid-May of next year. So just let everybody know that's ongoing right now. Upcoming events.
Supervisor Abrams, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I forget where I read this, but it was, and it's probably six months ago, but apparently there's been a new name assigned to what used to be called gypsy moths because of a cultural problem.
Well, yeah, they're, they're, we're supposed to call them spongy moths now, so I will, my, my goal for next year is to transition to spongy moths. So we'll, we'll have to have an educational process for that.
All right.
Just leave it for the new guy to.
You can finish up, including gypsy moss.
No, I did, I did solicit, one other thing. I did solicit proposals from HR firms for manager search. I think I got three in today, and so I'll be reviewing those and probably something on the agenda for the next meeting. Upcoming events, we're closed November eleventh. That's a long way away. As Tyler said, safety fair is Saturday, ten to three. Municipal League Summit's in Pittsburgh. Bulk Waste Collection is seven, October seventeenth to twenty-first, and Trick or Treat is on Halloween night. So that's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Moving on, next on the agenda is committee report. Is there any supervisor that would like to add to their committee report? And I see Supervisor Trevino?
Not an, an add, but calling your attention, the Finance Committee will begin the budget review process of each COG agency starting September twenty-ninth. And we have four meetings scheduled. At the scheduling of, of the agencies that will be reviewed on each of our four dates is listed in the report for the Finance Committee. And thank, thank you, Larry Beggar, for providing the report on the Finance Committee meetings. I, this is a personal comment. When I review, was reviewing the totality of the COG program plan and CIP proposals, which you all have copies of, when you look at it in totality, in the amount of new funding that's being requested, especially for new personnel, the increase over last year's COG budget is exorbitant. Well, that's my personal opinion. It's exorbitant. So my goal, with board's permission, is to, at these budget hearings for each agency, is, is to, and with the help of Larry and Doug's advice, look for ways to reduce their budget requests. Either postponing certain new hires that they, they want, or, or capital improvements, or whatever. But I think it's important that we, that all the municipalities in COG exert a very critical executive role in assessing these increases, these budgetary increases from each of the agencies, because I just don't know how we're going to handle, if we don't do that, how we could possibly handle the, the amount of increase they're, they're proposing, which would mean our municipal contributions to the COG would really increase quite a bit.
Thank you. Supervisor Trevino? Supervisor Magrino?
Oh, yeah, I, I forgot to check in. Human Resources and Parks Capital did not meet.
Okay. Supervisor Abrams?
I agree with Supervisor Trevino, Trevino on the, the plan, but I guess the, the real test is each thing should be justified as to whether it's going to help people in some tangible way. And.
True.
If it does, great, maybe. If it doesn't, wait.
Okay. I just want to make note, the public safety met yesterday, so I'll have my report at the next board meeting. All right, next on the agenda is other business. Doug, did we have any other business?
No, ma'am.
All right. Next, did I get a motion to adjourn?
Subpo.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. This meeting is now adjourned.